I have to call this meeting to order, it is 6:15, so we're out of time. So, thank you all very much for coming. So, I'd like to call the regular session of the City Council Meeting from March 21st, 2016, to order. And we'll start with the invocation from Benny? Benny Soto of Mountain View Church. Please rise.
Thank you for having me, and I appreciate the willingness of the city to be able to always do this. So, bow your heads with me in a word of prayer. Father God, we are grateful to be here, grateful for our city, grateful for those who serve it, behind the scenes, the staff, and those in front of us. So, I ask for a spirit of protection on them. I ask for wisdom and discernment in their hearts and in their spirits. I ask that they would lead with confidence, that you would give them boldness to lead in this city, and that they would take us to the places where we all want our city to be thriving and to be, help those employed and those jobs to just thrive. And so, Father, I ask for that wisdom, I ask for that blessing, I ask for that guidance. In your name I pray, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unknied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you all. Would you please call the roll?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmembers Smith.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Councilmembers Extrem and Shoraki are excused, we have a quorum.
Can you call for approval of the minutes? Are there any corrections on it? Hearing none, I call for a motion in a second.
I make a motion that the minutes be approved. And this is on both the City Council and Public Works, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
I made a seconded, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, this is the point, we have any council members' announcements? Are there any announcements at this time?
Mayor, I would like to have an announcement, if that's all right?
Yes ma'am.
This will be our first opportunity that's in the city is trying to recognize the good things that the community members are doing to contribute to our town. And so, today I wanted to invite all of the volunteer drivers from the Golden Age Shuttle who have come here to City Council Meeting tonight, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic. All of them.
All of them.
Everybody.
Oh, sea of blue, my favorite color. And you're all drivers?
Volunteer drivers.
Volunteer drivers.
Volunteer drivers, there are twenty-four, if I believe right.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So, there's actually even more.
Get in the camera.
So, come on in, and we'll, after I say a couple of words, I'd like to get a picture with all of us together. But, in the city meetings that I have gone to throughout the community, there have been times when people have said, especially concerning the genuine health and well-being of our citizens, we don't have public transportation, and this is an incredible need that we have for our, for our community members, especially the elderly, to get to their medical appointments, and even just to go to the store to get food. And what I have learned and have tried to be proponent of is that we do have that. And it's thanks to these fellows and women in our community, twenty-four volunteer drivers, that we have that service available to all of our community members, not just the elderly, but even the young, to get to where they need to go, which is a great benefit to us as a rural community, to have that to, available. And these volunteers, last year, did fifty-eight hundred hours, and put on sixty-nine thousand mile, sixty-nine thousand miles were clocked in. And you've brought freedom, accessibility, and social interaction and employment available to our citizens. And so, on the behalf of the mayor, the City Council, and the city of Canyon City, we would like to officially thank you for your service and congratulate you for all that you do. Thank you so much.
So, we go down, can we have a group picture now?
Yeah. We have letters for you, signed by the mayor, official thank you to you, and if you wouldn't mind coming up towards the front, and then we can gather up here too, I'd like to get a picture with everybody together.
If you guys could kind of get in that area, shorter people to the, yeah. Squish in, yeah, you're gonna have to squish in, probably within that area. You like each other, we know it, come on.
Get over here.
Carrie, are you gonna be able to get that guy to squish?
No, this is great.
Ashley, you need to get up there.
Yeah, I'm trying to get there, I'm all fired up with Ashley's stuff here.
I don't know how carefully you read your packet, but I thought this was funny.
When we get started.
Okay. Each one of those letters comes with a free cup of coffee, by the way.
That is special, you better.
Well, thank you, that's really great. Mr. Meisner, you had your councilperson, Ashley, beat you out, so you may now talk.
Oh, no.
Come on.
I conceded.
I was pretty excited.
She was pretty excited.
Did you?
Rightfully so. I think I have this right. Public Works, Wednesday, four o'clock, the 23rd. Councilman Extrem is not gonna be present, so I'll be chairing that at his request.
Okay.
So, I'll do the best I can. And I'd like to make just a couple of updates with the city administrator hiring.
Okay.
We currently, as of this afternoon, I think we have forty-eight applications. Keep in mind that those applications are all going to the Colorado Workforce Center. Who's in and who's out, I have no idea, other than the fact that there's forty-eight of them. Our eight-member First Committee that will look at those applications and grade them, and evaluate the responses to the questions, we've got that committee formed. That training will happen on Thursday, the 24th, here at City Hall. If you're on that committee, I'll be sending you some more information. Then, on April 7th, that committee will come back to City Hall and actually grade and evaluate each of those applications. That information will then be used to rank all of those applicants, so that we can choose the top applicants. We would then ideally do interviews of those three final applicants on March 25th, that's the intention.
April.
Or, April, yes.
Yeah, you said that the first was going to be, to grade them on April.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do the training on, on March 24th, and the grading on April 7th. Thanks, Lisa.
That was a test to see if you were listening.
That's right. And keep in mind that hopefully the applicants, the three finalists, will be coming into town the weekend of the 23rd. On the 24th, the day before those interviews, we're having some type of public meet and greet type of thing, that'll be here, for about thirty to forty-five minutes, just to give the public an opportunity to see those people, and then we're gonna do some other things from there. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Is there anyone else on council, have comments? I would like to announce that on April 13th, there'll be another Coffee with the Mayor, that will be at the Robinson Mansion, and that will be at, start at nine o'clock in the morning. We had one last Friday, and it was a packed room again. I think they're coming to see what I may or may not be up to. So, okay, moving along. We, the adoption of the consent agenda, so Doug, could you give us a review of the consent agenda, please?
Yes. The first item on the consent agenda is to authorize the mayor's signature, this is for a curation agreement with the United States Forest Service. We discussed this at the March 9th General Government Committee, as you may recall, it was recommended at that time. The purpose of this agreement is to allow our museum to be responsible for the preservation and storage of fossils that are found on Forest Service property. In this case, it would be in the San Isabel Forest, so this agreement would allow for that to occur. One of the good things that's, that's coming out of this agreement is, again, like we talked about in the past, it allows a lot of these fossils to remain here locally. In the past, a lot of these fossils have been hauled off to other museums, and by doing this, we've done this already with the BLM, with the Forest Service, it allows those fossils to remain here in the area, hopefully permanently, so hopefully that'll be a good thing. Next item is to authorize a city administrator's signature on a service agreement with Cogent Water Technology Group of Denver, Colorado, in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eight cents. Again, we reviewed this at the March 9th General Government Committee, and this agreement is for the, would allow for the removal by Cogent, and a reinstallation of a rotor assembly on one of our pumps up at the High Head Pump Station, which is in need of some maintenance and repair. The funds for this improvement were budgeted in the 2016 budget. Next item is to authorize payment, ten thousand dollars, to the Golden Age Center, so we're happy to do that tonight with all of you here. This is, was recommended at the March 9th General Government Committee, and this is in support of the Golden Age, the Fremont County Transit and the Golden Shuttle, which obviously, as we've seen tonight, is a great service to this community. So, it's kind of nice that all of that could happen tonight. These funds were budgeted in the 2016 budget. Next item is to extend bid thirty-four of thirteen. This would be to Twin Enviro of Penrose, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed three thousand, six hundred dollars. This is, I think, the third year of a three-year contract. This is for the annual pumping services for our restrooms that are in our city parks. This is something that we budget annually, this is in the 2016 budget. Next item is to extend bid thirty-five of thirteen, again, same thing, the third year of a three-year agreement. This would be to Twin Enviro of Penrose, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed, in this case, nine thousand dollars. And this is for the, the annual disposal of rubbish that's taken from our parks to the landfill. Again, this was budgeted in the 2016 budget. Next item is to extend bid number fifty-one of thirteen, same scenario, this is the third year of a three-year agreement. This is again to Twin Enviro of Penrose, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight hundred dollars. This is for the annual trash removal and recycling from various city locations, so this is our, our public buildings. Again, this was budgeted in the 2016 budget. Next item is to extend bid number ten of fourteen. This is for lawn maintenance services to B&amp;G Penrose, Colorado, B&amp;G Construction, in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. This is for lawn care services, this is across thirteen different public facilities that the city has, from City Hall to Public Works and, and other locations. Again, these funds were budgeted in the 2016 budget. Next item is Resolution Number Nine of 2016, we reviewed this at the February 17th Public Works Committee, it was recommended at that time. And this is a resolution that would demonstrate city support for a grant application submitted by the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Government, so we have a number of their representatives here in the back of the room tonight. And this is in support of a grant application for supportive housing project that would occur, hopefully here in Canyon City. And the purpose of this resolution would also then authorize a waiver of a permit fee and building, and tap fees related to the project. So, if this project is successful, the city would authorize the waiver of the building permit and tap fees for the project. And then, lastly, our list of bills for the last two-week period.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any additions or corrections from council? Hearing none, could I have a motion in a second? Weed?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, I make the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Are there any discussions on the motion?
I just have a question.
Mr. Meisner?
Doug, on that park thing, what is that doing?
Park thing?
For the park from Penrose, Penrose Construction, B&amp;G Construction?
B&amp;G, the extended bid number ten? Okay.
Lawn maintenance?
They do lawn maintenance of most of our public facilities.
That like cutting and all that, or?
Trimming, mowing, you bet. Now, this does not include the parks, the cemetery, that's all done within the Parks Department. So, this would be like at the museum, the library, here at City Hall, those kind of facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Hey, Doug, the administrator's report, please?
Just a couple of items for you tonight, first of all, just to kind of report, as we do typically this time of month, on sales tax revenues. Some good news is that you probably saw that in February, our sales tax collections were up, it looked like a very significant number, thirteen point eight percent. It's not quite that straightforward, as I mentioned in the report, we had a number of vendors that did not report their collections in January, those were actually reported in February, so it looked like we had a significant increase in February. If you really look at, at the first two months of the year compared to the first two months of last year, again, it's still good news, we're up seven point one percent for the first two months this year compared to the first two months of last year. And last year, the first two months was a, a good period as well, so that is good news. Next item on the report is Canyon Proud, I reported on this last time, I just want to give a reminder, we kicked off the Canyon Proud campaign today. The city clerk's office has been very busy giving out vouchers for people that have an interest in taking their household trash, debris, whatever it may be, out to, to the disposal. And we gave away a hundred and forty-five of those vouchers today, we have a hundred and seventy-five to give out. So, I would encourage people, if you have an interest in those, you might want to get to City Hall very early tomorrow, because they probably won't last very long, so hopefully we'll have a line at eight o'clock, so, all right? Next item, next item on the, on the report is, we've been talking about this for some time, to kind of update the, the City Council and the public about this. As you may know, Black Hills has been interested in transferring the power plant property to the city. That property would be transferred, it would, it would be a site that we've been working on in the Arkansas River Corridor Plan, that would have future use, that would be beneficial to the community, whether it's attracting visitors to our community, trying to hold visitors here in our community, so that when people come, they don't come for an hour, they, they can maybe stop there, do things, stay there for a while, get on our trails, go to our restaurants downtown, what have you, and hopefully stay in the community for an extended period of time. Anyway, we did meet with Black Hills on March 14th, this is something that's been in process for probably a year now, and Black Hills has had a few issues that they had to work out, I won't go into them, but I think that they've kind of worked through those issues now. As I've provided in the council packet, we did talk about the future use restrictions, there will have to be future use restrictions on this property. And the reason for that is that when Black Hills did clean up the site, they cleaned up the site to the extent that they know of the environmental issues on the site. But, from their perspective, what they, they want to be careful about is, should some use come in there in the future, dig down into the, into the property, into the ground, maybe open up something that no one was aware of, they just want to be very careful about that, so there would be certain environmental or use restrictions on the property, there would be an environmental covenant that would be put in place, as I mentioned, with the Public Health and Environmental Department of the state. So, we have got draft documents on those that I provided to you in your, in your packet. John, myself, probably others, will be very active in trying to provide input into them. We want to do, we want to make sure that the uses that are allowed are gonna be consistent with, with the plan that we're developing for the River Corridor, so that we don't have to go back in the future and try to change covenants and so on and so forth. So, that's something that we've been meeting with them on, we anticipate that there'll be another meeting here, probably within the next month or so, hopefully to start finalizing that. The one other point that I did make in the report is that Black Hills has asked the city to kind of spearhead the subdivision process, so we've agreed to do that, and we were, have actually started on that review, and we're kind of looking at the plat and some of the documents that go along with that at this time, so we'll, we'll be ready to move that forward as well. Last item I had, deals with the Arkansas River Plan, we talked to the, to the City Council about this, about moving the plan forward at your retreat, so that has been something that we've been working on, we had a meeting here recently with several key property owners along the river, and other representatives of the, of the city and others. We are looking now, beginning to advance that plan. If you have an interest in that plan, you can go onto the city's website, under Community Plans, and there's a copy of the Arkansas River Plan there to give you some ideas of what's being talked about. But, some of the things that came up in that, in this discussion, again, is beginning to advance the adoption of this plan, looking at the potential for acquiring certain properties, relocating certain industrial uses, there are certain industrial uses on the River Corridor, I think that we'd like to see relocated to a, hopefully a better location for them, but also a better location for the community, and begin to free up some of those areas for redevelopment purposes. So, we're talking about that as well. We're talking about the, the current zoning practices in the River Corridor, as we've talked about with the City Council, a lot of that River Corridor is zoned for industrial, it's zoned for general commercial, and a lot of those uses are sort of inconsistent, they're very broad, and so it, it opens up the door for industrial uses and so on, to go back into the River Corridor. So, we're looking at the idea of a zip, a different type of zoning category, to bring forward to the Planning Commission and to the City Council here in the near future, that would begin to reinforce the plan that we are developing for the River Corridor. So, all of those things are starting to come out of these discussions, and again, we have set a future meeting, probably about one month away, if I remember the date correctly, and we'll continue to work on this, and so you'll be hearing, and the community will be hearing more about the River Corridor and improvements that might be able to take place down there here in the near future. So, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, now, the next portions we have on the agenda, as usual, if there's anyone that has signed a piece of paper asking to address council on an issue, that's where we would put it in, not to be confused with what we did the first fifteen minutes. So, if you filled out a form on a specific topic, and you've given it to Kathy, then you're invited to come to the microphone and discuss that, that form. Apparently, there are none.
That would be the Citizens Request to Speak Form, we're still gonna go ahead and keep that portion of the agenda, and we have received no written requests to speak to council on an item that's not on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, then let's go on to ordinance number four, series.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I interrupt here for a second?
Yes, Mr. Weed, you're certainly.
Thank you. I, I guess as a suggestion, because I know there was a couple of people.
Right.
Had wanted to speak, but didn't get the opportunity, I, tonight, I would like to let them go ahead, but I, I would suggest that in the future, we start our open session with a comment that if you don't get the opportunity to speak during the open session, fill out one of those forms, give it up, and you'll, bring it up here, you'll still have the opportunity to address council, the only difference is you'll be televised, so you'll be less anonymous.
Okay. Is that, is that okay with council?
Perfect. I love it.
Okay, there were two gentlemen, now, we'll stick to the three-minute rule, and so we need your name and address.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ty Dudley, I live at 420 Rudd Avenue, I am also a precinct committee person for Fremont County Precinct Number 12. And there's been a matter that was brought to my attention of unconstitutionalism and political correctness, and I'm here to defend our Royal Gorge Tea Party. Our Second Amendment states that we have the right to bear arms, and coming up soon is our Blossom Festival, which is a celebration of our heritage to the people. Every year, the Royal Gorge Tea Party marches in the Blossom Festival, and these are guys, these are all good guys, who believe in open carry, conceal and carry, and also carrying their permits in their pockets and stuff. And basically, there's been an ordinance that has kind of banned them from being able to open carry or conceal and carry during the parade, which they do every year. And the reason why they say is because they don't want to scare the children. And this is just another example of political correctness, it's not cool, and it needs to be addressed, you know? And to back up the Royal Gorge Tea Party, you know, I've heard from, straight from our chief of police, who was told by the FBI, that, you know, ISIS terrorists have targeted our town and our public schools because of our supermax outside. We have also had a lone wolf Islamic attack outside of a gun store, a knife store, where one of our officers actually got stabbed right underneath the arm, and he put two bullets in one arm, one bullet in the other guy, didn't kill the guy, but the guy had the Quran on him, and that is very scary, that he might be practicing, entertaining the idea of Sharia law. And when it comes to history and things like that in Canyon City, we have a very rich history, and we do not cover up our history, or anything of that matter. And I just need to stress that the Royal Gorge Tea Party are the good guys, they are not the bad guys, they carry their permits in their pockets, and I believe that they should be allowed to march in the, in the Blossom Festival Parade without any stipulations. I don't know who put this stipulation towards the Tea Party, but I would like to see that removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is John Mosher, 113 Bob White Loop, and I'm doing something here that I never thought I'd be doing, I'm here to speak out in favor of a sales tax increase. I have a history in road maintenance, I came from Boulder County, please don't confuse me with the city of Boulder.
Okay.
We had a number of problems with, with road maintenance and, and keeping up with pavement condition, and I have thirty-two years with, with Boulder County Road Maintenance, and I have seen the effects of delayed maintenance, or maintenance that can't be done, and, and it becomes very expensive very quickly, and it, and it, and it's a beast that does not stop. It, it, the roads will keep getting worse and worse, and it's something that affects every person in this town, because the, the transportation infrastructure is a very, very important part of this community. There are a number of ways to address it, but I think that the sales tax is a very good way, because it helps through using other people's money. There's other ways to address it, like public, public districts, but that has a big impact on, on property owners and, and not people that are coming through the community and, and using the facilities of the transportation. But, I would, I would be happy to participate in, in any type of use that I can be to see it. But I would, I would be happy to participate in, in any type of use that I can be to see how we can advance this sales tax. The, there was numbers, I think, like a hundred and fifty-five million shortfall, and if that was last year, well, it's considerably more this year. And I think that's something that, that people need to be aware of, that it's always growing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weed, for that suggestion. I thought you were napping over there at one point.
This is the alert side of the room.
This is the, yeah. You're almost in the minority. Okay. No, I didn't mean that. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, now, let's move forward to ordinance number four, series of two thousand sixteen. This is the second reading, and would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number four, series of two thousand sixteen, and ordinance rezoning certain real property within the city of Canyon City, Colorado, or specifically seven thirty-one Woodlawn Avenue.
A motion from council in a second. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, council. I move that we approve ordinance number four, series of two thousand sixteen, on second reading.
Second.
Kathy? Second. Any discussion on the motion? Not, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Gil?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, then at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing for an application renewal of a three-point-two percent, three-point-two beer off-premises license from Country Corner. And could I have a report from the city clerk, please?
Ask Mr. Alan Drake to come to the podium. This is Alan Drake. He represents Allen D's LLC, doing business as Country Corner, who has applied to this council for his renewal of his three-point-two off-premises beer license. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the premises. Under council's current policy, routine renewals of liquor licenses are generally done administratively, and no public hearing is necessary. However, if there are concerns relative to a licensee, the council has directed staff to bring the licensee before them in this public hearing. This otherwise routine item has been scheduled for public hearing because they had an employee who sold alcohol to an underage patron during the routine inspection that was conducted by the state of Colorado in February of the past licensing year. In this case, the licensing paid a fi- fine to the state of Colorado in lieu of suspending the sales of alcohol. Council may wish to ask the licensee what actions they have been taken to ensure that this would not be a repeat violation. Upon reviewing the application, the appropriate forms and fees have been submitted. The applicant maintains possession of the premises through a lease. Sales tax reports are current, and the company remains in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have of the applicant.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Drake, thank you for coming down. Standard questions, are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
I am.
Is there a copy of the Colorado Liquor Code on file with your establishment?
There is.
And how many employees do you have?
At this location, we have six.
Okay. And are your employees trained on the Colorado Liquor Code? And if so, how?
Absolutely, from day one, before they even start, before they even start to work at the store, we bring them in for an orientation at our office, which includes going over the Liquor Code, which we hand them a copy of our policy, which states that they, if they attempt to sell alcohol to anyone that's not of legal age, they will be terminated, as was the case with this employee when they were, when they did sell the alcohol to an underage agent, they did forfeit their job immediately.
Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your business and result in the suspension and/or revocation of your license?
I am, yes, sir.
I, I do have kind of a couple of specific questions. Do you have any software-type systems in the store that trigger a request for identification or proof of age?
Thank you for asking, both on tobacco and alcohol. Whenever an item of those categories is rung up, you cannot proceed unless you enter in a birth date or swipe an ID verifying that person's age. In this case, the person bypassed that by entering in her own birth date.
That eliminates my next question. That's, well, good. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Are there any other questions of council?
Well, is there a deterrent from employees entering their own birth dates on a regular basis?
The only deterrent would be to eliminate that feature, which is therefore a convenience for the people that are routinely customers. It is very irritable to customers who, they're on a routine basis, to have to present their identification. That's the only convenience that we have. So eliminating that possibility is, is possible.
I would just like to also note that they do send training to, the cities offer training by the state of Colorado, so they do send quite a few of those employees and new employees to that training as well.
I'd like to offer one more comment. This is a topic every month in our manager and our staff meetings. It's something we take very seriously, and it's unfortunate that human beings either choose to or choose not to obey or just get lazy.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Hearing none, are there any questions or concerns from anybody in the audience? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I have a motion in a second from council? Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I move approval of the application for renewal of a three-point-two percent beer off-premises license for the Country Corner.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Meisner, second. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Member Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gil?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you for your time.
That closes that public session, our hearing. And I'd open another public hearing for the authorization and transfer of ownership, the retail liquor store license, Skyline Liquor. Anyone here for Skyline Liquor? Would you state your name and address, please?
My house currently live at eight-eight-five South Espinola Publix West.
And I am Don Lloyd at four-eight-four Field Avenue.
Could I have a report from the city clerk, please?
Yes, as they had said, this is Dawn and Christie. They are sole members of Skyline Liquor LLC who have filed an application for a transfer of retail liquor store license held by McRae Corporation, doing business as Skyline Liquor. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the premises as well. These applicants plan to operate the establishments that has been done in the past with no significant changes. They also plan to attend the upcoming training that will be conducted by the state liquor authority in the near future. They have identified that they will have limited staff that will receive on-the-job training and attend training offered by the city as a requirement of their job. A temporary license will be issued following this, if approved by this council pending state approval. Upon review of the application, appropriate state and city fees have been filed, diagram meets the requirements, and the applicant has possession of the premises through a lease agreement and holds a valid state and city sales tax license. With that, I'd open up to any questions you may have of these two applicants.
Are there any questions of council?
Mayor?
Mr. Gil?
Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes, and we actually have a copy of it.
Will there be a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your establishment? How many employees do you expect to have?
Approximately four.
How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
Require, you know, at least about one week on the job training. One employee wants to currently stay there, so she's already had the training and everything. And then we'll be running the, the business pretty much most of the time.
And they'll, they'll be attending the city?
Absolutely.
Very good. How did you acquire this? If there were signatures, if there was a petition, correct?
Not required in a transfer, only required with a new one.
Okay. Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and your business and result in suspension and/or revocation of your license? I have no further questions.
Are there any further questions of council? Mr. Meisner?
Do you, do you have some similar software to what Mr. Drake had mentioned in terms of some kind of a stoppage in that whole process that requires acknowledgement of an ID or a birthday?
I know the current owner requires a hundred percent identification, and her liquor POS is, has the capability of swiping identification cards. However, I don't know if it's currently turned on for sure, but we will require a hundred percent ID check.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to close the public hearing, thank you, and ask for a motion in a second from council.
Mr. Mayor and council?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a transfer of ownership of a retail liquor store license, McRae Corporation DBA Skyline Liquor to Skyline Liquor LLC, DBA Skyline Liquor, twenty-four oh-one North Ninth Street in Canyon City.
Second. Mr. Weed's second. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gil?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote. Come see me tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to ordinance number five, series number two thousand sixteen, excuse me, on second reading. It's appointment of the city's appointed officers. I need three to introduce.
Mayor?
First reading.
Before there's an introduction of this ordinance, could I ask all council members to look to page two, item number four, middle sentence, says each of the three appointed officers, it should say both of the appointed officers. Our template was for three, but in this case, we have only two covered by the ordinance.
Okay, so no, we'll make that change.
Make the change now, then we won't have to amend.
I, I thought that looked suspicious, but.
Why'd you cut it?
Well.
What's the change?
There, there's only two appointed officers in this particular case instead of three.
Yeah, I didn't hear it says three.
Says three. I, I retain some.
Works.
I just wanted to let you know I did retain some of my math skills. Okay. I need to, to introduce Mr. Gil, Mr. Meisner, and Ms. Smith. And could I have the clerk read by title?
This is a bill for ordinance number five, series of two thousand sixteen, and ordinance reappointing the city attorney and municipal judge and establishing the compensation and benefits to be paid and otherwise provided to each.
Got a report from the city attorney?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor and members of council. This is the same ordinance format we've used several times in the past to appoint the appointed officers of the city. This year, you have the municipal judge and the city attorney covered by this ordinance. The city administrator, as, as I think everybody now knows, has chosen not to be reappointed, so it covers just those two appointed officers. The contracts with respect both the city attorney and the municipal judge have been negotiated, signed by the judge and the attorney, and will be signable by the mayor upon approval of this ordinance. On final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Could I have a motion for, on council, in a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Smith?
I motion that we approve ordinance number five, two thousand sixteen, to which city council will reappoint John D. Havens as city attorney and Larry Dean Allen as municipal judge.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Second?
Second, thank you. The Schumacher, second then, so. By second or second, anyway. Any discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gil?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Seeing no other business for this astute group, I adjourn the meeting.